Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the April 4th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kalo has our dog this morning. It's been at the kennel for quite a long time, so he needs a home desperately.
Look up there, let me see. Our featured dog this week is about a three-year-old American Rottweiler. Great personality. Nice guy, come here. There you go. He doesn't bite, at least not yet.
He's scared.
But he's looking for a home. He's available for adoption on Saturday at 3:00. How many dogs do we have in the kennel right now, Jack?
Thirty-one.
We have thirty-one dogs, but he's looking for a real good home, so stop by and pick this dog up for your family. Come on, guys.
It's like, who is that? Oh, how cute. He's like, "I'm so pretty. I'm so pretty." Oh, he's getting bigger. That was so cute. It's like, who is that? Oh, how cute. He's like, "I'm so pretty. I'm so pretty." Oh, he's getting bigger. That was so cute. Yeah, that never happened. Wow. Smart dog, too. Very vain.
Want to do the proclamation first?
Yeah, we're gonna do the proclamation first. Okay, I have a proclamation. In the matter of recognizing national child abuse prevention and awareness for the month of April 2012 in Lorraine County, whereas across the county, April is recognized as Child Abuse and Neglect Prevention Month, state and local agencies and concerned citizens all work toward a common purpose of preventing child abuse by delivering a powerful collective message about the importance of protecting children and supporting families. Whereas Lorraine County understands that when the well-being of children and family becomes a priority of everyone in a community, the number of children, child abuse and neglect incidences will decrease. And whereas through a local effort, our government, schools, churches, and local organizations will work together to ensure that every child has a chance for a safe and positive future. And whereas the Lorraine County Campaign, Wear Blue to Work on April 11th, I wore today, encourages community members to take an active stand, educate themselves on how they can help, and wear blue to work to show their support of the importance of preventing child abuse and neglect. And now therefore be it resolved by the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners that we hereby recognize April 2012 as National Child Abuse Prevention and Awareness Month and encourage all citizens to join in this Wear Blue to Work on April 11th campaign to raise the awareness of child abuse prevention and ensure every child has a chance for a safe and positive future, free from abuse and neglect. Signed by your County Commissioners Lori Kowalski, Tom Williams, and Ted Kalo. And Patty Jo?
Thank you. I'm Patty Jo Burnett from Lorraine County Children's Services with Melissa Stefano, the Director of Lorraine County Children and Families Council. Thank you much for this proclamation. Lorraine County Children's Services does receive approximately 300 referrals of abuse or neglect each month from residents here in Lorraine County. And by engaging the business community and the Wear Blue to Work effort, I think that we're able to extend the conversation about strengthening families and providing positive opportunities for children and families into communities and businesses and workplaces that don't normally have this conversation, extending our reach and our understanding of positive child development further into Lorraine County. We have with us flyers about Wear Blue to Work, so anyone that wants to still engage in signing up to Wear Blue next Wednesday can contact us and let us know. We do provide our organizations and businesses that have signed up with a packet of information that they can use for their employee wellness committees, employee newsletters, things like that. And we do have bags of Wear Blue to Work buttons that we provide to each of the companies as well, which Melissa will provide for you today. Thank you very much for the proclamation.
Thank you, for all you do. Melissa?
I just want to make a couple announcements along with that. The proclamation is just kicking off our month-long activities, and this is a national campaign and awareness, so across the United States, the whole state is celebrating this. But however, I just wanted to say there are some local calendar events on April 11th. We're having a half-day workshop at Murray Ridge, and that covers domestic violence in families. And that's a collaborative effort between Genesis House and the Board of DD. And that's designed, it's a targeted workshop for early intervention and home visiting staff. On April 13th, at the Illyria High School Performing Arts Center, there's a special event that focuses on bringing awareness of violence against women and girls, and the proceeds will benefit the Rape Crisis Center here in Lorraine County. You can get those tickets at the Nord Center. And then there, on April 18th, there's a full-day conference. It's our seventh annual conference for Lorraine County, and we expect around 200-plus attendees to that conference. It's held at LCC. And we have a great line of national speakers. There's three tracks that participants can sign up for. There's a legal track, a behavioral health track, and also a medical track this year. And then finally, on April 21st, at Midway Mall, this is also an ongoing event held annually, attracting hundreds of families. It's called the Rally for Kids, and they're celebrating the Pulse for a Child, which is another state child abuse awareness campaign. And so there's lots of events, giveaways, and fun things to do at the mall on April 21st, which is a Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Did you want photos?
Yes.
Commissioners, they'd like to get a photo with us. Okay. Madam Clerk, we're gonna skip over to the bond issue, which is number-
Number 12.
Twelve.
Authorizing County of Lorraine, Ohio to approve the issuance of hospital facilities' revenue bonds of the County of Allen, Ohio, authorizing supplement of a certain sublease and certain agreement of lease with Catholic Health Partners and its affiliates in connection with the release of certain property and authorizing other documents in connection with the issuance of such bonds and such release. And I don't know if Don or Patty had something, and then Erin from Peck Schaefer is here.
Okay. Morning, Pat.
Good morning. Sure, this morning, the Port Authority conducted the TAFR hearing for these bonds. Erin Sutton is the issuer counsel. She may be able to answer some questions for you. It's about 430 million, is that right?
Four hundred and twenty million.
Four hundred and twenty. That may be going to market about May, and it refinances some debt, be expended for some hospital improvements, and then cover some costs of-
Mercy Hospital?
Yes, that's right. Catholic Health Partners, and then Mercy out here is our partner, so.
Okay.
Well, these are being issued through Allen County, not Lorraine County, as we used to do in the past, so-
Correct.
Some of the Lorraine County rules aren't applicable like they were in the past that we had done on ours, correct?
Not, yeah, correct. And, you know, we'd inquired about that condition, and essentially there's a larger presence for the hospital than the issuing county, and they wanted to stick to that.
So there's no prevailing wage in this?
Well, it looks as though there are no significant capital improvements going on up here for these facilities, and I'm not sure the prevailing wage under that circumstance.
Do we have any control over it?
I'm not so sure we do.
Well, we ask counsel.
Yeah.
Erin?
That would be the best.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Erin Sutton with Peck Schaefer and Williamson Columbus, and we're bond counsel on this transaction. And as Mr. Metzger explained, this is a bond issue, and the bonds are being issued by Allen County, Ohio. And the proceeds of the bonds, if issued, will be used to refund two Lorraine County bond issues that were issued in 2001 and 2002, and there'll be a new money expenditure piece. And the reason we're here at Lorraine County at this time is that if any of the proceeds of these bonds, because they're refunding bonds, were spent here in 2001, 2002, we have to have a TAFR hearing and approval of the local governmental officials. And it's possible that there will be some money spent here in Lorraine County, but if there is, it would be on routine capital expenditures.
What do you mean by routine, Erin?
Just their ordinary budgeted capital expenditures, equipment. There's no major construction projects planned in Lorraine County that I'm aware of right now.
That's what we're asking towards. We just happen to have some of the labor guys in back there.
Sure.
I didn't know we needed-
Do you have any questions, Mike, that you'd like to address?
Yes, thank you. Mike, why don't you use the other podium, and then Erin can stay at this one, so we can have some dialogue without bumping each other from the podium.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Sherman, Eaton Township. I'm here on behalf of the Ohio State Association of the Plumbing and Pipe Fitting Industry. And we've been very good partners with the Catholic Healthcare Partners and Mercy Hospital System. And when these bonds came about before, they were issued through Lorraine County, I think at the time, because of the favorable bond rating. And these good Commissioners up here inserted language, although Ohio revised code doesn't require hospital bonds to be prevailing wage unless the local authority- I see Mr. Ennis nodding his head, so I think I'm right on this. Unless the local lending authority puts it in. And Lorraine County has done that in their bond procedures, so I thank Commissioners for bringing this up at this time rather than waiting under public comment. That's my question. There are some major capital improvements coming in Lorraine County. The Avon Facility, the Amherst Wellness Facility, possibly Allen Hospital, so that was my question. A, when we talk about capital improvements, there is some possibility that these dollars would be used for capital improvements in Lorraine County, even though they're being issued out of Allen County. So when we issued them out of Lorraine County, the prevailing wage requirement just applied to projects within Lorraine County. It wasn't incumbent upon those other facilities, Springfield, I think, Lima, so on and so forth, unless they did it. So if I'm understanding correctly now, if Lima County or Allen County is issuing the bonds, then prevailing wage is not applicable in Lorraine County, even though they have that in their procedure here in Lorraine County?
Well, I think, to answer your question, not applicable under Ohio law, but it's certainly up to Allen County as the issuer to choose whether they would put prevailing wage as a requirement in the bond documents, as you all have done in the past. It's my understanding that the new money is actually in Lorraine County, capital expenditures, which would be, you know, MRI machines or things like that, where I don't think prevailing wage would be an issue. And as far as prevailing wage down in Allen County, I'm not fully actually up to speed on that issue. I'm not sure what their requirements have been in the past. They've only been the issuer since 2008.
When will Allen County be taking this under? When will they actually be issuing? Mid-next month, did you say?
Correct, correct. So the bonds are expected to be issued mid-May, probably the end of May. But again, I don't think there's any major construction projects in Allen County either. It's capital expenditures, mostly spent at, I believe, Mercy West Hospital in Cincinnati. And the rest, the bulk of the bond issue is the refunding of the outstanding bonds that were issued in 2001, 2002.
If I recall correctly, in '01 and '02, there was an actual list of facilities, am I correct, Mr. Cordez?
Correct. There was a list of where the expenditures were going to occur, and those issuance, there was about three and a half million dollars that was expended here at what was Community Health Partners at the time, which is now Mercy. And the remainder, the bulk of the remainder, was spent on the renovation of the Springfield Facility, and there were some issues down there with trying to convince them to head in the direction that you guys were happy with, too, down there. And I suspect that that's part of the reason why we're not the issuer anymore of these conduit bonds. Because, you know, clearly they could be issued over by Cincinnati, but they'll be issued in Allen County this time.
Because of the bond rating?
No, because of requirements that are put into the package. We used to be the issuance, the conduit of choice for Community Health Partners for a lot of years, hundreds of millions of dollars, and we don't have that anymore.
Again, I want to reiterate that we've been very good partners with the Catholic system. They've, they appeared here, we had quite a good dialogue with Sister Gross Miller.
I don't remember, Mike, but I remember those years and the events that occurred.
And that was very good. And as far as Lima goes, the major expansion over it, I think it's either St. Rita's or St. Elizabeth's, was done under a project labor agreement utilizing local workforce. So we've done very well over there. And if it's out of order, I would respectfully request that the Lorraine County Commissioners communicate with the Allen County Commissioners and let them know what we've done over here, and perhaps encourage, or at least ask them to look at the possibility of putting in prevailing wage requirements, if that's appropriate.
Can we request that?
Madam Commissioner, I think what you could do is, as part of this resolution, you could make a recommendation to the Allen County Commissioners that at least with respect to any construction projects in Lorraine County, that that be included, if it's legally feasible. I'm not sure they can, but I think that's the best thing we can do.
Well, I think that was our issue before, though, even though we had it, and other counties didn't have to agree with-
Right. Yeah, they wouldn't have to, so I think all you can do is-
Right, just whatever, any capital project here.
Make a recommendation that they adopt something like that.
Commissioner, she could certainly put it in a whereas clause at the beginning of the resolution, recognizing Lorraine County's support of labor and desire to have construction projects completed with prevailing wage. You can put language in there like that, certainly.
Okay.
I appreciate that, and obviously the backup to that, or the justification for that, is because you've had that as your bond procedure here locally for a number of years, so I certainly think it rails good.
Yeah, and Mr. Sherman, I haven't heard that Lorraine County's use of prevailing wage or non-use of it was the reason that Lorraine County isn't the issuer anymore.
Well, I, actually, you haven't heard that, and nobody said that. I actually put it out there as an assumption, because we were-
Right.
The prime county that issued, I'm talking hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of Catholic Health Care's bonds, and after we had some discussions with them and some reworking of how we did our procedures here, they sought other communities to do their conduit bonds to, so one would link one dot to the other and assume that there was a reason why they did that.
Didn't we raise our fees also, Jim, when there were two?
Actually, our fees, our fees are very, rather modest for these type of bonds, right, Pat?
Correct.
So it's not that, I don't think we priced ourselves out of the market, because if that was the case, we would have competed. And it was, it's just unique that we're not getting that conduit work anymore, that's all. And we would, we really like to have that conduit work here in Lorraine County and reestablish that partnership. Mike, do you want to introduce the other folks that took some time to come here with you?
Yes, we have Pete Pappas is the Business Manager of Labor's Local 758, and also the Lorraine County Coordinator for the North Central Building Trades, and also Jeff Bomer is the Business Manager for the IBW Electrical Workers Local 129. He's also an Executive Board Member at the North Central Ohio Building Trades. And Counsel, I want to thank you for the observation. I have no inclination as to why they went to Allen County this time instead of Lorraine County. All I was respectfully requesting is, if they are going to use any of these bonds for any projects in Lorraine County, that they strongly consider the bond procedure that's in place currently, and that's the utilization of prevailing wage.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Jeff. Thanks, Pete.
I would like to make a motion to approve, as with the amendment. Did you get that amendment that the counselor had?
Yeah, we'll converse later about exactly where it goes.
Okay.
We have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, that's second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Resolutions Number One, Job and Family Services?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Advances?
So moved.
Second.
Investment?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Auditor, authorize the Auditor as Fiscal Agent for Tuberculosis Clinic Control Unit.
Was that added on later? I don't remember seeing that.
From the draft, yes, it was.
It was? Was there any documents that went along with it?
Just the letter from Mark Stewart requesting this be-
Yeah, I actually had a question on it, Jim. Is there a reason that the auditor, since we've moved it to Mercy? I didn't get to see it, I was in meetings all day here in St. Cleveland, so I didn't see the add-on either. So I was gonna question it this morning.
I was told that we had to do this so they wouldn't pay the bills, so I didn't ask a lot of questions, you know, I got so many other things to do. I don't know why we need to do it.
Mr. Ennis?
Why he left?
I don't know, there's a real legal reason.
It's Stewart, we expect.
I didn't see any problem with going forward with it, if it makes the auditor feel more comfortable.
Well, my only question is, is he gonna come back and say, "We added another responsibility to him, so he needs more money"? The bills are gonna be paid through the TB fund are gonna be modest at best, because we have the MOU with Mercy, and we'll be doing, you know, periodic payments to them. Other than that, there's not a lot of minute details, like supplies and things like that. It's just not gonna occur, there's no, there's no salary accounts.
Yeah, unemployment.
The unemployment, which, which the unemployment will be a transfer from the TB funds to the general fund, because we picked up all those employees under the general fund to make the transition, so we'll just reimburse ourselves for the minor amount of unemployment we've had, so it's not gonna be, it's gonna be a handful of documents.
So then the bills will just go from Mercy direct to the Auditor's office and not through us?
No, they'll come through us.
Okay. And they'll still go through Lisa?
Yes, so we, our procedure with them is to invoice us, and we'll take care of them here, because clearly we need to monitor the performance of the MOU, and also, you know, I'm getting ready to have, you know, some discussion with the Board pretty quick about the status of that TB levy, too, so we need to maintain a firm control on that.
So your recommendation?
If he wants it, let's just do it.
Oh, okay, and pay the bills, okay.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have every fund that we have designated somebody as the fiscal agent for every fund we have, but they require it, so be it.
Did I make a motion?
No.
Nope.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Did you have more?
I'm just, you know, with the auditor, I always look at what type of angles he's gonna be coming at us in the future. Do you see this, Jim?
No comment.
All right, well, we'll wait and see. I'm sure it's gonna be for additional funds, so. I'm done.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
I do have a few minor amount of issues. Potential new hires at Golden Acres Nursing Home. Also have a couple disciplinary actions that I need to discuss at the nursing home with the Board. Update on ongoing labor negotiations with regard to the corporate courts contract, if we have time to get to it. That said, you know, we need to go back into our-
Stormwater meeting.
Stormwater meeting, so what I would suggest is that the conclusion of our meeting, we break for executive, but we're not gonna go right into executive. We go into the stormwater, and then after we conclude that meeting, we'll come into executive real quick and get through those issues.
Okay, thank you.
Those topics are allowed under the sunshine law for those discussions. Thank you.
Approve and waive the reinvenance name of the County Commissioners' meeting minutes of March 28, 2012?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, advertise for bids for Carlyle Township Sewer Facility Improvement Project on Edgewood Drive, notice being the chronic on April 6 and 13. Bids to be opened at 2:00 PM on April 20. An estimate cost of work is $140,191, and will be completed by December 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Under Community Development, advertise for bids for Sheffield Township Sewer Facility Improvement Project on Albany Avenue, notice being the chronic on April 6 and 13. Bids to be opened at 2:30 on April 20. An estimate cost of work is $99,244, and complete by October 31st, not $444,000.
Is this an assessment project?
CDBG money?
No, the, we're actually working on the sewers up there with CDBG funds and some township funds, and also, as you get to the next issue, see that we have some MPDS that we're using to secure some property up there. We're gonna take six lots, we're gonna tear one house down, subdivide them, plow them into four lots, and then do some building. This is all part of that project, so currently my understanding is that there's no assessments on the sewer. In fact, I'm gonna say I'm 100% of that, because we haven't had any sewer hearing for assessments.
I think you meant NSP money, not MPDS money.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all running together this morning, sorry.
We're talking about water runoff there.
Yeah.
We're talking about the neighborhood stabilization program.
I haven't shifted gears too much from our stormwater board meeting, yes.
Put your other hand on, Mr. Cordez.
We're trying.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kowalski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordez, County Minister?
Thank you. I actually indicated it'd be later on the agenda, but I was also confused on that. It was something that'll be on the next agenda. I just reviewed that material from Community Development for those two projects, and one of them is directly related to the sewer here, so I misspoke again on that. But we are going to obtain six properties there and tear one residence down, and then put them in the four, because the lots are so small over there. So you'll be, you'll be dealing with that issue next week. Other than that, just to let you know that, again, we need to go back and finish our stormwater board meeting, and before we convene into executive session, so hopefully we'll get through that pretty quickly. I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I have one matter of imminent court action that I would like to discuss in the executive session.
secure some property up there. We're going to take six lots. We're going to tear one house down, subdivide employee plot them into four lots and then do some building. This is all part of that project. So currently, my understanding is that there's no assessments on the sewer. In fact, I'm going to say I'm 100% of that because we haven't had any sewer hearing for assessments.
I think you meant NSP money, not MPDS money.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's all running together this morning, sorry.
We're talking about water runoff there.
Yeah.
We're talking about the neighborhood stabilization program.
I haven't shifted gears too much from our stormwater board meeting.
Put your other head on, Mr. Cortez.
We're trying.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla? Under the Engineering, advertise for bids for Gore Affinish Road Bridge 05190 Replacement, Bryan Township, notice being the journal on April 6 and 13th and open at 2:00 PM on April 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Receive and accept the 2012 Annual Highway Condition Report?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Cortez, County Minister?
Thank you. I actually indicated it'd be later on the agenda, but I was also confused on that. It was something that'll be on the next agenda. I just reviewed that material from Community Development for those two projects. And one of them has directly related to the sewer here, so I misspoke again on that. But we are going to obtain six properties there and tear one residence down and then put them in the four because the lots are so small over there. So you'll be dealing with that issue next week. Other than that, just to let you know that, again, we need to go back and finish our stormwater board meeting and before we convene into executive session. So hopefully, we can do that pretty quickly. I have no further comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Commissioners, I have one matter of imminent court action that I would like to discuss in the executive session.
Commissioners, report.
No report this morning.
Wow, okay. Busy week. One opportunity we seem to miss out on though, the Lorraine County is a member of the Lake Erie Energy Development Corporation, which is our offshore wind project with four other counties. This week, the state of Ohio passed on joining a group that has the federal government in five states considering how we're going to develop policy and procedures and permitting on this. And Ohio and Indiana both said they do it on their own, didn't need the help, which is kind of disappointing. Also met with the Mayor of Lorraine and Doug Rangel, their finance guy, talking about certain different scenarios possibly on the St. Joe's Building. I'm waiting on an email or might already be in my inbox to share what the other Commissioners look at. Yesterday, I spent the day in Cleveland getting, there was an hour and 10 minutes. It was crazy with 90 in the bridge. I don't know how they're going to do opening day, but interviewing candidates for replacement of Howard Mayor who is retiring. So also had discussions with the stormwater person, Tom, it's probably something with you and Jim, that Lorco is talking about that Columbia Township area. And I guess they're going to meet with them next month to discuss it. So that's something we'll write that on our agenda, how we're going to handle that going forward.
Yeah, on that, I know Columbia Township trustees are looking at doing a resolution to put in some parcels into Lorco, which is going to be going down Route 82.
And I gave them the concerns that Mr. Ennis had, so that was the week.
All right. I spoke with the Mayor briefly on the meeting. He said they're going to be doing a presentation Monday for City Council. Is that it?
That's what he said, he's going to talk to committee. I don't know if they're doing a presentation, but that's what I had seen in the paper.
Okay. Well, not much this week as far as next week. I'm going to be meeting with Congressman Jim Jordan, who's going to be coming into Lorraine County to represent us. If there's any issues you would like me to bring up with him, just forward that on to me. And then next week, we also have, I believe, Lorco, Nawaka is coming up, correct?
Yes, next Friday.
Next Friday, so that's going to be my report. And hope everyone has a happy Easter.
Next Wednesday at 2:00 is our Records Commission meeting. Board correspondents?
Move the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anybody wishing to bring up an issue with us this morning?
Yeah, I see.
It's Genie.
Genie, but you want to come up?
No, I wasn't sure if you were going to discuss it at this meeting, so I figured I would be here if you did.
Well, actually, we can bring that up. There were some issues with the Bar Association, getting back to them on the space that we took a look upstairs. You're looking for 1,500 square feet, correct?
Absolutely.
And I went up there with Karen Davis, our Special Projects Director. We have 11 vacant offices right now. And the chamber commerce where they're at right now is 1,506 square feet. What I was looking at doing is possibly moving them closer over to Team Lorraine County to share their lobby and put them in there, give them the same square footage, and then bring in the Bar Association if that area meets their requirements.
Why would they just go in an open area?
What open area?
For the place where you want to move the chamber to.
Well, just they need a lobby. That's the issue. They need a lobby. And with doing this, there would be no renovation cost for it. So we could work with them to meet their needs and also getting some revenue that could come in. And if the Board would like, we could actually use that revenue to go towards the economic development. We cut Team Lorraine County and also the Chamber. So by moving them, and currently, they're not paying any rent, and bringing the Bar Association in, which I think would, may not meet the needs up there or fit in, but neither does the college. But we could use the funds to actually pay for some of the economic development.
I've been emailing Karen Davis back and forth about the fifth floor at the Justice Center. Asked if the Bar Association had taken a look at that, and she said that they had not.
The fifth floor?
Yeah.
Well, there really is no fifth floor.
Right.
It's a shell. And it's configured. Now, obviously, can be reconfigured, but the part that's built out with the infrastructure is configured for additional courtrooms. So that's the mechanical layout and the HVAC building that are up there. So that would have to be modified. We'd have to bring in an architect and all that in to do that.
You're looking at a tremendous cost to go through and do the build-out for that for 1,500 square feet. After you're looking at possibly 15,000 square feet, we might be able to do that. But for 1,500 to go through and do the build-out, that's going to be a great cost. Other areas, if we wanted to try to do it, we're still looking at doing renovation, which would be a cost. And just taking a look.
What other area?
Well, we have the one, was it the conference room that we have? Trying to think what area of building that's at. It's vacant right now.
I'm sorry, I'm not getting it.
Over by Mike Challenger's office.
Oh, yeah, there's a small conference room that's shared by the folks up there.
The issue is, is again, creating a lobby and then going through and doing renovation costs for it.
I just have a concern, and no offense, Genie, love the Bar Association, but I don't see that as a fit. When we designed the fifth floor, it was for economic development. The college is a part of it, but they add the Distance Learning Center, but they are also one of our major partners in the economic development. And it was more of a trade-out because they wanted to get distance learning in Lorraine someone like Gavin Lorraine in Wellington, and they're working out a facility on Ridgeville. But is there any place in the Justice Center? I think that's where the Bar Association probably would fit best. Because the attorneys are there anyway, and it's the courts and...
You want to come up?
She gave us...
No, no, Tim's coming.
Hi, Tim. The guy who knows all about the Justice Center.
Unfortunately, I do. There probably is not any pre-existing space that would accommodate them, but I wanted to, this is very preliminary, and I want, at least I want to make you aware of it so that it can factor into your considerations. I know the judges have tasked me to look at options to consider for our probation in our PSI office. And one of those might be to put them into the fifth floor. And it's still very preliminary, and we've talked to, they've had me talk to a architect, and we're not, haven't engaged in any costs yet. But they're going to give me some, at least rough estimates of what some kind of build-outs and costs for doing that would be. And I'm going to, once I receive that, I'll bring it to your attention as well. And so if you were looking at possibly bringing the Bar Association in, and now it doesn't, at the current stage with just them, it doesn't make economic sense, maybe it does in conjunction with further expansion. I just offer that for your consideration.
I was kind of thinking about that with the PSI's also.
Yeah, I know for the Bar, the Bar Association, you're looking at moving with, your lease ends October, correct?
Correct. We could always go to a month a month. I don't know how imminent our building will be. We just anticipate some changes with our building. We're working on it, and we don't know when it's going to happen. We could continue on a month a month, I would assume, in October, if the building is still occupied and owned by the same person that owns it. Or...
Hey, Genie, you almost need to come up to the microphone in dialogue so we can hear, so everybody else can hear what you're saying.
It's possible in October, we could go to a month a month. If the building is still owned by the current owner and it's still occupied by renters, we could go. We could probably do a month a month at that point if that's what your intentions are, is to build out the fifth floor. And we have that locked up, and we know that that's where we're going, we would do that. But if that's, I mean, if it's still, while we're kicking it around, we don't know what we're going to do, and it's September, we're going to have to make a decision.
Understanding, and not to, I mean, we're not, it's not against, I just don't think the fifth floor is a fit for the county Bar Association when it's the Chamber. I mean, the only other option on the far side is if the solid waste were to move into the facility on Abbey Road and move it off to one wing. But I mean, again, it doesn't fit into what we do up there because the solid waste has an revolving loan fund in regards to the financing.
Now, if you go on that side of the building, the 11 vacant offices are on the other side. You have probably another 10 vacant offices over by the solid wayside too. And the issue that they need is they need a 10 by 10 lobby.
We also need a conference room
Right.
that will accommodate, I would say, 15 to 18 people. We don't always have large meetings, but we do once a month, our Ethics Committee meets.
Not to interrupt you, we always have available our conference room that's used by everybody. So I mean, I don't know the conference room, just based on scheduling.
What we normally do here in the building is, we don't have really any private conference rooms per se.
Right.
We share conference rooms and we book space in them, and we find that utilizes the space more fully. And we do have an executive conference room that'll hold 14 people and has the technology to be an exec. It's right over here. And we have the front meeting room, and we have this meeting room, and then we have an auxiliary meeting room where we do the big auctions because they usually get huge crowds and trample things. And then we have, we have another executive conference room in the back that we, Teresa, we're fairly booked, they get utilized quite a bit.
Our Ethics Committee, it meets offsite now.
That's because we can't accommodate everyone. We would like to bring it back.
Can I ask how much square footage you are in now?
We have 972 square feet where we are now.
And?
We would ideally like 1,500. We could go bigger. Our big containment is cost. We are a small, I know we have 400-plus attorneys, but we don't, we're a small nonprofit. We don't have a large pocket.
If you were looking at 1,500 square feet at the rate that we were charging before, that's about $20,000 a year in rent. Is that where you're situated right now? And we're having conversations about conference room square footage, but we haven't had any dialogue about what you're prepared to pay.
That decision isn't mine. That decision is the Executive Committee's. I could tell them that that would be approximately the cost.
We do our cost by, we have a company, Maximus, that prepares our cost estimates for the square footage, and we use that as a guide. Now, of course, the Board is...
Flexible enough that we can adjust those rates.
You can adjust it. I don't want to make it an absolute here, but when we were renting, we used the Maximus guide, 1,500 square foot, rings a bell about $19,000, $20,000 for that. So I just need to put out there because I keep hearing, well, we're going to make money, we're going to rent it, and we're going to get some income. What we haven't discussed
Is the money.
Yeah, the money.
There will be some...
But $1 is income if it's more than you're getting now.
By the time you figure out the use of utilities and everything else, if it's parts that aren't being used, if they're opened up, they're still, so I mean, you have to take off the cost.
Right.
Well, that's why I was looking at the fifth floor is because we're already paying those costs. We're not receiving any money from the Chamber. And by just moving them over, we could actually bring in some revenue dollars.
But we may not have to move them over if we provide another conference room.
Well, it's not really the conference room, it's more of the lobby.
We also need a reception area.
Right. And that's the area where we have a lobby at. There's no additional cost for renovation by putting them up there. It's pretty much, you know, paint, and then you guys are in. So, and there's an area up there, Mr. Tilio's office, which is, he's the Director for the Chamber, is large enough to be a conference room as well. You know, for the size that you're looking at. Then they have two additional offices in there, and then the area for their copier and equipment.
What are you looking timewise, Tim, on what you're talking about in regards to PSI and the adult probation?
I just met with the architect on Monday. He's going to get me a proposal. Hopefully, I'll receive it this week or next week. Once I get that, I would probably, I still have to have a conversation with the judges and say, "Here's his rough proposals. Do you, judges, feel this is within a reasonable perspective?" And then I would obviously come over to the Commissioners and say, "This is what we have as a rough estimate. I would anticipate concern regardless of what the costs are because of our financial situation now." And so we would have to have a dialogue as to what the Commissioners feel, is if that's a reasonable expansion, or whether alternatives we can look at.
Do you have money in your budget for build-out?
No. Now, what I would look to do is actually look to the state. We've kind of pushed on them in the past to try to get rent and have not been successful. But what I would, the way I would anticipate broaching this is to bring them in, let them see our existing facility, let them see the impact on our production because it is actually having some serious impact. And then say to them, "Look, we're going to look to you for additional personnel costs" because, they being the state, because of this stuff, perhaps you could give us those costs in facilities for rent, which we could then turn over to the Commissioners. But that's still very speculative at this point in time.
Yeah. And that's going to bring up another thing that we do have to look at is the building, the condition you're talking about, it's the old courthouse, which...
Has issues, costs and ramifications.
We're going to need to really take a look at what we're going to do there.